Live.
We're live.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, September the fifteenth, City Council Agenda Session. Now call this meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation will tonight will be by the chairman. So we'll get the flag up, please. Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
Which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to read from some scripture tonight. I think that we can all benefit from Proverbs fifteen, verse number one, "A soft answer turneth away wrath, but grievous words stir up anger." I think we can all keep that in mind tonight. Would you bow with me in prayer? God, I pray that tonight that we would all be wise in the selection of our words that we use. Help our words to be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 Yes.
All right. We have no special presentations this afternoon. We do have a, well, I guess we do a public hearing under special presentations. And at this time, I will turn the floor over to our Chair of the Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Burge, to go over the amendments that will be discussed and open for public hearing tonight. Councilwoman Burge.
Yes, thank you much. Phil, if you would first, if you would go over the rules for the public hearing, and then I'll have some comments before we get started.
Yes, ma'am. The rules for our public hearing this evening, as this has been a notice that has been published in the paper regarding amendments to the operating budget and to the capital budget ordinance for the city for the 2020 and 2021 year. There are four specific items which the council will be hearing about concerning the budget ordinance amendment this evening here. One is an appropriation for the general fund reserves to the Electric Power Board of Chattanooga for Hamilton County Schools Education Connect Initiative. And there is also a separate one to replace page sixty-nine of the General Pay Plan to be consistent with approved operations funding and only provide for increases to employees who are not paid in the amount of the federal poverty guidelines. And the other one is regarding our provisions in the capital budget, which involved an amendment to that budget request here to amend improvements on the capital budget to appropriate $150,000 from the Department of Economic and Community Development Capital Project Public Art in new capital construction to Southeast Tennessee Development District for Artist Work Program. And then another one for to accept and appropriate $531,036 additional transportation improvement program funds to Transportation Capital Project Pavement Management Number Two for the Bailey Avenue Projects. These were all noticed in the paper as required by law here ten days in advance of any consideration of these items on final reading. And tonight, these items are subject to a public hearing at this time. There will be a two-minute limitation on the public hearing, as I understand the chairman's statements last week, and a total of two hours that will be devoted to this public hearing this evening.
Thank you very much. The reason I ask that he read these is because I know there are a number of you out there that want to speak, and we want to hear you. One of the council rules is that you can only speak once at a public meeting during the day. So I want you to make very sure that when you speak, you speak according to the topics that Phil just mentioned. If not, then we will have to cut you off. I don't want you cut off. So if you're talking on something different, please hold that till the end of the meeting, and then you'll get your opportunity to speak. I think everybody ought to have their opportunity, but the council very respectfully, and hopefully you'll be respectful of the council, has asked that we hold tight to the limits of just the topics that are on the amendments. I hope that's clear. I want everyone to have their opportunity. And with that, they'll get started. And Mr. Vice Chair, how many people do we have?
There are a total of close to thirty people. There's varied reasons for them to speak. Some are on this, some are on zoning cases, ma'am.
So of those of you who are really speaking to one of the four items relative to directly to the amendments, if you would raise your hands, those others of you who want to speak about things, about police budget or other items like that, which I know you've got a lot of energy about, because I fight for your freedom of speech and your reason to speak, if you would stay silent now and hold that till the end, you won't be cut off. So, Mr. Chair, if you would raise your hands, if you want to talk about one of these four items, I'd love to recognize you and hear what you have to say. So who is first, Mr. Vice Chair? And if you would put up two minutes.
Got our timer?
Yes, thank you.
And our first participant, ma'am.
And who is it?
Marie. I am assuming that is Ms. Mott. There is no last name, and she has registered.
Okay. Marie, please speak. Let us hear from you.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am standing in solidarity, I'm sure, with various citizens all across this city that want to ensure that...
Ms. Mott, if you would, excuse me, if you would identify yourself and what district.
My name is Marie Mott.
Good.
I think that should be clear. And I live in District Eight. But anyways, yes, ma'am. What is very important right now is that we have children who may not have access to internet services in their neighborhood. And regardless of some rather ridiculous remarks made by certain council individuals, they deserve to have access on free reduced lunch to these services that were originally promised to them by our mayor. So I would like to see the infrastructure for EPB, when the 1.5 million, as well as the Chrome tablets that they need to be able to be competitive educationally. I would also like to stand in solidarity with the raises that our city employees need and the investment into transportation. These are not things that really we should be begging for. We should not be having a public hearing for. Our city council has been sitting on the council now, many of you multiple terms, some of you for years. These are things you should have been bringing forth from day one. This is not a request for your vote. Yes, this is a demand, just to be frankly clear. Black Lives Matter. I yield my time.
Thank you so much for those great comments. Next, Mr. Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask if Lydia would read these names as I'm confirming them on the list.
Oh, that would be great.
And then we'll go from there. And the two that have their hands up, they have registered.
Okay. Who is it, Lydia?
Sunny Burden.
Sunny Burden?
Yes, ma'am.
You're on. You have two minutes.
All right. Hi. My name is Sunny Burden, and I have both of my daughters here with me, Garland and Jerry Burden. We are in District Two, I believe, in Red Bank. They are both at Alpine Crest Elementary School in the first grade and in third grade. And I am just speaking on behalf of the Hamilton County School Ed Connect Program. We have been very fortunate to be receiving free or reduced internet through EPB for the past, well, free throughout quarantine and reduced previous to that. I am most certainly thankful how it has helped us. And I believe that without it, we would be in much dire need of other helps. But we are using it currently for schoolwork, school at home. We definitely use it for other household reasons, paying our bills, medical and doctor visits. My husband and I both definitely utilize it for all of those things, talking to family and friends throughout quarantine. It's definitely been beneficial to have that free or reduced internet access for our entire family. So I definitely would urge to pass that budget for the Ed Connect to reach more people, as we found it very, very beneficial and helpful. And that's all I have to say.
That's a great lot to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Elizabeth Boone Prieto. Elizabeth, are you there? Hello? She's unmute. Okay, unmute your mic so we can hear you. I'm not hearing anything.
Uh, one second. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Hello, Carol. This, hi, I'm Elizabeth Boone Prieto. And I have my daughter with me. Her name is Odosa Prieto. She attends Brown Middle School. She's with, she's a seventh grader there. Financially, before the HCS Ed Connect power by EPB, home internet connection, you know, Wi-Fi, I was signing the form through the school for the low-income assistance. And I was paying $35 per month through, as a single mother. And that's quite expensive through the pandemic. And I was unemployed for eight months, homeschooling my child, with, which has, she's autistic, okay? She has learning disabilities. So it's not feasible. This, this is a savior. It saved us money. I could work from home. I got a computer. I could be with my child. She could learn and do her work virtually. She could do her homework. She could study. And I could be right here with her, with a child with learning disabilities, be right by her side. And, and, and it saved, it saved us both, okay? I could be able to start my own business now and, and support my daughter and be right, right there with her. She, and, and it's just amazing. This is not a necessity. It is a mandated need. We have to have this. Chattanooga, the whole city, needs it.
And your time is up. And thank you for those great comments, Elizabeth, hanging there with us, okay? Great work. Who's next? Danielle Jones. Ms. Jones, Danielle, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Good.
So I actually work and have a child that goes to Ulta Y Elementary School. And we are in D...
What districts are you?
D nine.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And so she is in the pre-K of the Ulta Y Elementary School. And it's definitely been helpful for her to be in contact with her teacher. She still is in the Cohort A and B. So she goes on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, she still has to check in by eight-thirty in order to be part of that attendance. And so she also has to, like, answer questions of whatever it is that the teacher may put on to one of the programs that they have at the school. And so without that, then she wouldn't be able to do that. And then, of course, we appreciated it because of being able to have doctor's appointments that's been virtual and been able to get in contact with our families and, and things of that nature, and check on our families and everything. So yes, without the HCS Ed Connect with EPB, we, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So we definitely appreciate it and need it.
Thank you very much. Is that a picture of you? And who is that?
Yes, ma'am. And Callie. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who's next?
We have no other hands at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in the public hearing about these particular amendments? Anyone? Thank you very much for the comments you made. And I will now close the public hearing and turn it back over to Chairman Henderson for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a hand from Councilwoman Coonrod. Councilwoman, you have something you need to say?
Yes. Just want to make sure that constituents that are listening on is that because we had, you know, someone to, at the beginning, deliver wrong information. So I need to correct that information. No one on council said that we don't need to have, that kids do not need access to internet. What was said, and I was that councilperson that said it, is that everybody need access to internet, not just inner-city kids. And I think we've heard that and it's been heard clear from Ms. Sunny Burden. Also, Ms. Elizabeth Boone has said that as well. You know, my constituent Danielle that lives in my district, her daughter goes to Ulta Y. She's able to utilize the Chrome notebooks and everything that they, they provide as well. So I just want to make sure that people are clear in my statement. Everybody within the city of Chattanooga, if you on free or reduced lunch, need to have access to the internet. If you have any questions or concerns about what I said, reach out to me. You know, we got to stop allowing people to mislead us with the wrong information. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Could I get approval of the minutes, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
It's nine yeses.
So moved. Now we move into our Order of Business for the City Council. Tonight, we do have several items on first, I'm sorry, on final reading. At this time, because of the nature of the first item, I'm going to turn the chair over to our Vice Chair, Kent Smith, and ask him to take the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's move into our first planning item, five A. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate properties located at 251, 263, 269, and 275 Riverside Avenue from R-1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse Zero Lot Lines Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman, Chairman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I've been in contact with the applicant, Morgan Lane, and we've, I think, sort of reached a compromise because of the difficulty, the constraints of the land. It was going to be, I guess, somewhat impossible to do the one to five driveways that we voted for last week. But in a compromise to reduce density, I think, and improve safety, what we've agreed upon is a limit of no more than sixteen units with a maximum of eight curb cuts, which I think is a good compromise. I have spoken with CDOT. They believe so as well. So at this time, Mr. Attorney, I think I'm going to try to do this in a proper order. I'm going to move to approve.
Second.
Item five A.
All right, sir.
All right. We got a motion and a second.
Okay.
No further comment?
Now I'm going to move to amend. And the amendment will be, the new amendment will be limited to no more than sixteen dwelling units with a maximum of eight curb cuts.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second for the amendment. Saying no further hands. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you.
Chairman? Thank you, council. Now I would like to move as amended.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to approve as amended. Saying no further hands. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chairman, the floor is once again yours, sir.
Thank you, council. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, we'll now move to item five B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate property located at 7302 Journey and Row from R-4 Special Zone to C-2 Convenience Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Lefter, I see your hand. I also have a hand by Attorney Noblet.
I'll yield to the, I'll yield to the attorney.
All right, sir.
Yes, sir. Since that was an amendment to item number five A, and that was a substantial amendment on here, that puts it back to first reading. So that's an approval on first reading. It will go up for final reading next week.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilwoman Lefter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move for approval on final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to approve on second reading with a proper second. Questions or concerns before we vote? If not, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Five C, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate property located at 1815 East Main Street for M2 Light Industrial Zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burr?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. V, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate property located at 1006 East Fourteenth Street from R-3 Residential Zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burr, the floor is again yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries, nine zero. Five E, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate unaddressed property in the 3,500 block of East Fifty-first Street from R-1 Residential, Residential Zone and R-3 Residential Zone to R-3 Residential Zone and A1 Urban Agricultural Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Coonrod, this is your district.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a proper motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Now we move into ordinances on their first reading. We have a couple of planning items, actually just one. Madam Clerk, if you would read six A, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-eight zoning ordinance so as to rezonate parts of two properties located at 4409 Elwood Lane and 4409 Jersey Pike from O-1 Alpha Zone to M2 Light Industries Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Gilbert, this is your district. Do you need to hear from the applicant or any opposition?
I'd like to hear from John Bridger, please.
Okay. Ms. Lydia? I see John Bridger is present. Would you bring him in, please?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Miss Bridger?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Councilwoman Gilbert has some questions for you.
Bridger, can you go ahead and read all the conditions, please, sir?
There are eight conditions. Condition number one is a fifty-eight-foot buffer of existing vegetation shall be left along the R-1 Zone, northern property line. This includes the eight-foot existing utility easement. Second condition reads, six-foot-high chain-league fence, security fence shall be constructed to the inside of the buffer for the full length of the M2 Zone. The third condition is the height of the building, equipment, and any accessory structure shall be limited to thirty-five feet. This height shall be measured from the finished floor elevation of the slab. Condition number four, no telecommunications tower shall be permitted. Condition number five, no microwave towers shall be permitted. Number six, no rug cleaning operation shall be permitted. Number seven, the retention pond, which is shown on parcel one twenty-nine I-l fourteen, shall remain in its current location. And condition number eight, active textile dyeing on the site shall be prohibited.
Based on that, I move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve as conditioned with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Augustby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
The motion carries, nine zero. Now, with no objections from the council, I'm going to ask that the clerk read B, C, and D, and we'll take those as a group. Ms. Lydia, go ahead and excuse Mr. Bridger.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk? Oh, wait, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Councilwoman Gilbert, is that an old hand or an old hand? Old hand, okay. All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk. B, C, and D, please.
Yes. Item B, an ordinance closing and abandoning sewer easement located at 2,700 through 2,800 North Point Boulevard, text map numbers 110J8007, 110J8007.03, and 110J8007.04 as detailed on the attached map. Item C, an ordinance closing and abandoning sewer easement located at the 8,000 block of Volkswagen Drive, text map number 130001.18 as detailed on the attached map. Item D, an ordinance closing and abandoning sewer easement located at the 1,000 block of Main Street and Fillmore Street, text map number 148PK002 as detailed on the attached map.
Councilwoman Burge?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote on B, C, and D? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Burge?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lefter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries. Now, we move into our resolutions for this afternoon, uh, with no objections. Madam Clerk, I'd like to read A, B, and C as a package.
Yes. Item A, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic and Community Development in conjunction with the city treasury department to renew an agreement in substantially the form attached with opengov dot inc formerly Viewpoint Government Solutions for operating software for the Land Development Office for the second year of a three term with an option to renew for an additional one-year term for a total of three years in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred twenty dollars and eighty cents. Item B, a resolution authorizing the interim treasurer to renew the contract with First Horizon Bank for commercial and general banking services, including lockbox services, payroll, car, soft, safekeeping, and custodial accounts, and for the collection of sewer payments, property taxes, and water quality fees located, locations for the third and final one-year renewal period ending November seventh, twenty twenty-one for an estimated amount of forty-seven thousand dollars.
Councilwoman Byrd's, I'm not sure if that is an old hand, but your hand is up, ma'am.
I know, and it's going to make a motion to approve as soon as C is read.
Oh. Did I jump, I jumped the gun again, didn't I? Go ahead, Madam Clerk. You paused, you paused and left an opening.
A resolution authorizing the payment of Tennessee Municipal League TML membership dues for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one based upon the city's population as reported with the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, Local Planning Assistance Office certified by the twenty twenty census and updated by the DECD annually in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred dollars.
All right, Councilwoman Byrd's, I think we're ready now.
Can I go now? Okay, move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve items A, B, and C with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burz?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries. Now, with no objection from the council, let's read items, uh, seven, D, E, and F, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Item D, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number two for hazen and soils relative to contract number W one seven zero zero four one zero one wet weather combined sewer storage phase one, a consent decree project for an increased amount of three hundred ten thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents for a revised contract amount of two million three hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents. Item E, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number two for Heron Construction Company of Etowah, Tennessee, relative to contract number W one five zero zero nine two zero one MBW WTP control room upgrades for an increased amount of ninety-seven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents to release the remaining contingency amount of two thousand two, two thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents for a revised contract amount of one million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and six cents. Item L, a resolution authorizing approval of change order number one final for Clinco Construction in Tennessee Inc. relative to contract number S one eight zero one two two zero one, Appling Street drainage improvements for a decreased amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents to release the contingency amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a revised contract amount eight hundred seventy-three thousand forty-nine dollars and one cent.
It's the pleasure of the council.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Byrd with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries. Okay, we now move into our purchases. Um, Ms. Lydia, if you would bring in Mr. Salmons while we are pulling up our purchases for this evening, please.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Salmons.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of council. We have three new purchases for your approval and one emergency purchase for your notice. The first two being from the Chattanooga Police Department. The first item is the purchase of stalker mover radar units, a single sole purchase, being awarded to Applied Concepts Incorporated for an estimated annual cost of one hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The next item, a LiDAR units for speed indoor, uh, enforcement, also a single source purchase being appla- uh, being awarded to Applied Concepts Incorporated for an estimated annual cost of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars. And the last purchase from the Department of Economic and Community Development, Open Gov Software Support and Related Professional Services, also a single source purchase being awarded to Open Gov Incorporated for an annual estimated cost of thirty thousand and eighty dollars. And that concludes the new purchases for this evening.
Well, it's the pleasure of the council.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve these purchases with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote?
I've got, I've got a comment.
Oh, Madam?
Yeah, just, I can't. So is Chief Tucker still there? Is Eric still there? I will find out. I can't. Good. Chief Tucker?
You want to bring him in, Ms. Lydia?
Yes, sir.
Chief, chief, how you doing this evening?
Doing well.
Councilwoman Byrd has a question for you.
No, it's just a comment, chief. You know I can't let this go by when I see stalker radar units and all this other. So could you tell me where they're going to be placed so I don't get caught speeding all the time?
Well, some of the stalker units are a, uh, unit that, um, is fixed in the vehicle. It's a moving radar system. Uh, of course, the LiDAR is handheld, so.
Yeah, so I'm kidding you. You know that. Uh, if I could, I had, I'm going to vote for this as long as I'll have advance notice about where you're locating them, since I'm on, speed limits are advisory only, aren't they, chief?
Well, no, there's actually some science behind it.
Oh, God, all right.
Mr. Bailey would probably argue that.
Yeah, thanks for letting me kid you a little bit. Of course, I, I approve this. Have a good evening, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Lydia, you can excuse Chief Tucker. Uh, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any other questions or comments before we vote? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coonrod?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Burz?
Of course.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Henderson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
So moved. Mr. Salmons, I have made myself a note about reporting the emergency purchases tonight, so we don't have to bring you back.
No problem at all. We do, we do have one emergency purchase under the mayor's emergency declaration. It's being paid to the Salvation Army, and it's for providing managed care through housing for homeless Chattanooga residents who had been, uh, tested positive and to prevent the spread of the COVID nineteen, uh, disease in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. And that concludes the emergency purchases.
All right, any questions for Mr. Salmons before we let him go get into some comfortable clothes? Mr. Salmons, thank you very much, sir.
You're always welcome.
Excuse him. Okay. Let me flip back over. Now, we come to other business that needs to be brought before the council. Is there any other business that we have tonight? Councilman Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I've had several questions. Uh, I know this falls in Councilwoman Coonrod's, uh, committee. Uh, just if we can get an update, several people are wanting to know when we're going to open up the rest of the centers and how it's going to look. Uh, I visit some of the centers and see the extra staff and other people. They're working during the virtual, uh, the virtual learning. Uh, but a lot of kids are getting off the bus with their bus stops and their parents and saying, hey, the boys' club is open. When are we going to open? We need to open up. So, uh, if Councilwoman Coonrod and the YFD staff, if it's possible, I'd like to get an update or understanding on what process we have to open up the rec centers.
All right, very well. Councilman Leford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mentioned this earlier in our strategic planning session, but today we held a joint press conference with, uh, my colleague in the county, Commissioner Sabrina Smedley, uh, along with the United Way at the Hamilton YMCA to announce that ongoing assistance for tornado, um, uh, devastation anywhere in the city, if you've been affected by the tornado, whether it's dealing with, uh, an insurance or a lack of insurance, or you're needing help cleaning up, there's so many services that are still available. It's been five months since the Easter tornado, and so many people have, have, have created avenues for, uh, for relief. And I just wanted to use this opportunity tonight to remember these three numbers, two, one, one. That is United Way's number that ends. We have dedicated staff to take the calls, process, and directly connect folks to services that are still available. Uh, the, the, the rebuilding, the relief efforts in East Brainerd and across the city that are affected by the tornado. We're no, we're, we're not out of the woods on this. We're still working on this. We're not going to stop until, uh, until people get the help that they, they, they need. So I just wanted to remember to, to tell people, two, one, one. If you've been affected by the tornado and you're still needing services, I want you to know that people are out there, and we're out there. The city is out there, the county, uh, our faith community, our nonprofits, multitudes of people are out there and still assisting and providing, uh, the help that's needed. Remember those, those numbers, two, one, one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Leford, I love how you and my friend Sabrina work together. You know, I, I call on her so much. I think she's my county commissioner now. Uh, but, um, I just wanted to answer Byrd's question. Um, of course, you know, we do understand that the services needed where our parents want to drop their kids at a YFD site, we're not a daycare facility. Uh, we're not the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club, it is open. They've made that decision. However, with us, we've decided to, you know, open up the super sites to do the virtual learning to try to help, you know, the parents that may need that additional help, that service. And right now, we're just not, we're still working on a plan to open up our other YFD sites. And right now, we're still going by the guidelines of what that's been mandated by our governor. Uh, hopefully soon that we can open up our YFD sites. Uh, we most, as the chair of the YFD committee, I most definitely don't want to chance opening up all our sites and, you know, and maximize the number of people that's going to be at our sites because a lot of kids frequent our sites and chance anything about, uh, you know, them catching COVID or anything like that. Um, and most definitely don't want us to have to start putting measures and different things in place where our parents have to sign a statement saying if something happens, they're not going to su- you know, all that kind of stuff. So we got to make sure that we're protecting us and we're protecting our, our, our citizens that we, we represent as a, you know, elected officials. You know, hopefully soon we'll be getting back to it. But I think that, um, have constituents reach out for whatever resources we have to offer that can help keep their, their kids occupied. Like, we appropriated the funds to the soccer program where they can get a soccer ball, they can get some goals, they can go outside and they can play. We doing a virtual basketball so they can go. That's a hundred thousand dollars we gave to them. Get them involved in those different things, um, and other resources. Each YFD sites, the staff are coming in. They have different programs that they've implemented virtually. Their kids can take part in too. They can kind of occupy their time. But right now, uh, it is a great time for families to start bunding because we've gotten away from that. Start having those sit-down dinners amongst each other and, you know, helping with homework and doing the other things that family have gotten away from. To, it's now a great time to do that. And once our YFD centers are ready and feel safe enough to open, then we can drop our kids back off again. More, may have more to add.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. I'm sure we'll get an update, uh, very soon on our YFD centers. Uh, Councilman Byrd? All right, I see no other hands for other businesses. Uh, other business, we'll now move into committee reports. Uh, I'm going to start with Councilman Gilbert.
No report.
Vice Chair Smith, you'll have to unmute, sir.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had Public Works and Transportation today, and we will again in two weeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Oglesby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Today at Economic and Community Development, we heard a great presentation from Mr. Charles Wood with the chamber and our very own Sharita Allen, our deputy economic development person, about an economic opportunity coming to Enterprise South where there will be a, uh, transaction, uh, land sale and option. So we're real excited and, uh, looking forward to that opportunity at Enterprise South.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Byrd's?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Earlier in this meeting, we had a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Leford?
No report, Chair.
Councilman Byrd just went away.
I'm here, I'm here, Chair.
Oh, okay, all right.
No request, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Chip, in case you missed it, uh, and other business, there was an update on YFD.
I said there will be, I said there'll be more coming.
But, uh, I just wanted to report that with the Office of Family Empowerment that we do still have funding for rent assistance and energy assistance. Reach out to the Office of Family Empowerment at four two three six four three six four three four, or, uh, contact Yolanda Johnson, who's the coordinator, community coordinator. Um, and her number is four two three six four three six four five two, so you can get, uh, you can, we can help you with your rent and energy. And then, as Leford mentioned earlier, please contact two one one. If you have, you were affected by the Easter tornado in April, reach, call that number so you can get the help and services that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. Now, we move into the portion of our agenda where we recognize persons wishing to address the council, and it's my understanding, uh, from the vice chair that we do have several this afternoon. So, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I guess you could go ahead and put the clock up on the screen as the attorney, uh, reads the rules of engagement. If you have registered to speak, uh, tonight, and you would like to do so this evening, would you begin raising your hand at this time as the attorney, uh, begins reading our rules?
Yes, sir. The, the council is continuing to follow the orders that have been let down by the governor of the state of Tennessee. Uh, Executive Order sixty provides for continuing electronic meetings here through October the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty. And at the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and here's your rules. Uh, each speaker wishing to address the council can be recognized only, uh, on the screen for that purpose. Uh, you'll have to provide your name, uh, and council district of residence before addressing the council. Uh, no person can have more than three minutes to speak during this portion. The speaker may address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi judicial authority, and you can't address them on matters which are not under the authority of the council or are regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Uh, the speaker cannot use any vulgar or obscene language or use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards any individual council members. Uh, this evening, uh, if anyone's already had an opportunity to speak, you can only speak once to the council during the council day.
All right, thank you, sir. It's my understanding that the first four attendees have registered, and they're, they are good to go. So, uh, Ms. Lydia, would you bring in Steve Hunt, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
Members of the council, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I am Steve Hunt, the Volunteer Board Chair of the Chattanooga Central Business Improvement District. First, I'd like you to know that the Cbid Board voted early on to go by the public name of the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance.
Mr. Hunt, would you give us, would you give us your district number, please?
Oh, my. Well, I'm in the downtown district. I'm in Mr. Oglesby's district with my property, properties we own.
District seven.
The Downtown Chattanooga Alliance, it sounds friendlier than Cbid and is more representative of our work to be in alliance with the city and the property owners and residents and anyone who visits the district just to make their experience better. When the Alliance was created, I really didn't grasp that we, which is you and me and the property owners, were creating a small business. But we have. This new small business is flourishing. It employs sixteen folks from the Chattanooga area. It rents space from a Chattanooga landlord. It has really made a difference in the geographic area of downtown Chattanooga that it serves. Certainly from an employment standpoint with those sixteen new hires, but also from cleanliness and beautification perspective and from a hospitality perspective, even during COVID. The Alliance Executive Director, Steve Brooks, provided you with a copy of the August twenty twenty executive summary of the Alliance's work to date. And it points out these facts. In the first month, the Alliance and its ambassadors removed seven hundred and fifty-three graffiti tags. It cleaned up seventy-seven incidents of biohazard. The ambassadors spent three hundred and sixty-six hours on special projects like mulching the tree wells and another nineteen hours pressure washing greasy and grimy sidewalks. They removed weeds on twenty-five block spaces and started a mid-evening trash collection. So the trash that is put out by the businesses who close shortly after lunch doesn't lay around smelling and get redistributed by the wind or rain or by folks going through it. The Alliance has helped disadvantaged people in the district, directing folks to service providers and even supplying a much-needed pair of shoes to an individual, thanks to Steve Brooks' new relationship with the Community Kitchen. I'd like you to know the district is better served because of this small business and it's sixteen employees here. And I want to especially thank you for your support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Lydia, if you would bring in, please, Steve Brooks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can, go ahead, sir.
I'm Steve Brooks and I'm with District Seven. I want to thank the members of the council for allowing us this time to speak with you. As a follow-up from our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I just wanted to highlight some of the work that has occurred since my arrival and the ambassador launched just seven weeks ago. The Chattanooga Business Improvement District, or Cbid, also known as the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance, has developed strong relationships and works daily with social service organizations, Public Works, CDOT, CPD, property owners, property management nonprofits and businesses both small and large. Whether in a daily check-in with a business or partnering with Public Works on a project, downtown is definitely cleaner along with people feeling they have someone they can rely on to get answers and results. And this is not a service only to those that live and work in the area. As one example, our ambassadors worked with an individual experiencing homelessness and was successful in housing him with a family member in Ohio. It took time to build trust, a partnership with the police department, a willingness to contact his family and work out a safe situation for him. Once those things happened, we purchased his bus fare and confirmed his successful reunification with his sister. While you can see from the report I provided ahead of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, the number of trash bags collected, graffiti removed, biohazards cleaned and other cleaning and beautification metrics are something our team is proud of. And we strive to do more as a team, continues to grow and develop their skillsets. With our core group of six, we have recently filled our team of fifteen ambassadors, fourteen of which are from the city of Chattanooga. We are a diverse team made up of single parents, men, women, veterans, returning citizens, people of all ages with different religious beliefs and sexual preferences. Sixty-six percent of the ambassadors are black while thirty-four percent are white. And we think we represent Chattanooga well. And for you to get to know the ambassadors and me better, along with the work that we do, I'd like to meet with you all at your convenience and walk around the district with social distancing in mind and wearing masks. These walks are beneficial tools not to learn about the Alliance, but to share ideas and develop a collective vision for our city. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Ms. Lydia, I believe that would be Erin Wheatley.
Yes, sir. Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council for your time tonight. My name is Erin Wheatley. I live in Mr. Oglesby District, which is District Seven. I also work in District Seven where I'm an educator of children who also live in District Seven. In fact, I, on Monday, I missed being able to introduce myself to Mr. Oglesby when he was touring my school. However, I'm calling because I believe that my students and their families will be directly and positively impacted when you divest from the police department and invest in our communities of color. I'm asking you to redirect funds allocated for things like polygraph, overtime, data processing and training centers and move it into daycare, affordable housing and YFD centers. The call to divest from the police and invest into black and brown communities is the will of the people. It is also a choice that reflects our city's values in the humanity and the dignity of its citizens. And since I see that I have about a minute and fifty seconds left, I also want to take this time to stand in solidarity with the families who are requesting access to free Wi-Fi through the EdConnect partnership with EPB and Hamilton County Schools. Thank you and I yield my time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council this evening, would you raise your hand? All right, Mr. Jeffrey Melldahl, please.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeffrey Melldahl. I live in District Seven. I wanted to speak tonight about the budget process and the amendments that are now being put forward to be voted on next week as well as the, we had a month or so ago about budget priorities. I did want to note, sometimes the separation of topics between public hearings and public comment sections is, is kind of disorienting and it becomes hard to know with things that are as interconnected as these budget items, when one should speak. So what I'm going to say, you know, has to do with what was discussed earlier as well as branching into other areas. So we were told when the budget amendments that Chattanooga DSA put forward and that council generously took up several pre-meeting sessions, we were told that there wasn't, that there had been enough time for budget input from the community and that for that reason, we shouldn't reexamine these budget priorities. But as we're seeing with this misapproval of, or, you know, I would say it was a good instinct to approve a budget with raises for city workers. But as we see, like COVID nineteen and these compounding crises resulted in all kinds of confusion about where our cities should be putting money. I think the city workers well deserve those raises and they, that should be considered as we sort of reopen the budget questions. But the, the other crisis that hit, you know, shortly after COVID was this crisis of consciousness among Americans all over the country that we have a national, nationwide crisis of overpolicing. And now that we are, you know, revisiting certain budget items, I think as, as Mr. Bird put forward, like this would be a good time to reexamine some of those questions. We've all had a lot of time to think about where we want our city to be going. We've had a chance to look at the precedents from other cities who have successfully reallocated resources to things that are more affirmative to their communities. And if we are going to be going into a period of COVID-induced austerity, I think it's all the more important that we're putting resources towards our communities. Some of the other speakers have already mentioned, like there, there's plenty of good opportunities to do that. So let's keep that conversation open, like let's not just close it out when y'all vote on this in the next couple of weeks. We can amend the budget at any time, let's do it.
All right, Mr. Casey Crook, please.
Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Casey Crook. I live in District Three and I am calling again today to talk about the, as we are discussing the budget more broadly, I didn't have comments earlier for the specific budget amendments that were voted on earlier today, but I wanted to talk about the last time that budget amendments were put forth, there was the belief, there was the idea or statement that the budget was a contract between the city and the employees. And I, I find it especially interesting that the, the budget is now being re-admitted against that quote unquote contract, whether, whether in error or whether for whatever reason. I just find that particular line of rhetoric has maybe aged a little poorly. And I urge the council to readdress and, and review how better the public funds can be spent. And I use the word public funds, as, as I've said before, to the council because these are, these are not taxpayer dollars per se, as, as people often call them. They, they are publicly allocated and publicly decided funds. They're, they are for the good of everyone and they should benefit, especially the most vulnerable of us. And as people have called in previously, I think most often myself, calling to expand housing, helping, help for the homeless and housing assistance and, and things like that. I find it especially interesting that there has thus far been no action done on that other than addressing the success or touting the success of existing homeless programs. And today, it is especially interesting to find that the council has approved thirty-six thousand dollars to the Salvation Army, which does in fact do help towards, towards homeless, towards helping the homeless, but has a history of discrimination against queer, trans, gay, other LGBTQIA or plus individuals. And on top of that, they are a nonprofit, an outside force. And so I call on the council to use those public funds for public good to help the most vulnerable of us rather than pushing the money to an outside force that is working for their own goods, to their own agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Crook, your time, your time is up, sir. All right, Ms. Lydia, John Beeter.
Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you, council members, for having me, for your time and your attention. My name is John Beeter, I live in District Eight and I'm an independent filmmaker and have actually formerly worked for our local PBS station. So recognize many of you and attended many of the, the meetings where we would film and record them. I'm calling in today because I'd like to encourage a continued dialogue about divesting in the police and turning some of that money and that funding towards programs where the police don't need to be involved. I'm actually currently working on a project with another city's police force who requested training on how to talk to individuals with opioid use disorder. And I'm so thrilled to see them looking to fund training and also to teach their officers how to approach and address this issue. But I'm also concerned with that they may not be the best people to do that. And why not use those funds to support the people who do have the training in addressing folks with opioid use disorder? And so I use that as an example to say that there are cities, this is actually the, the city of Denver has contracted me, their Department of Public Health, to make training videos. So there are cities who are doing this successfully. They also have a program called STAR where a paramedic and a social worker are sent out to calls where they don't believe an officer is needed. This has had great success since it started in June and hopefully we'll get more data from that, from that program. But I continue to see other cities successfully trialing and piloting these programs to great success and would be so proud to see that happen in this city as well. I really love this city and appreciate the time and opportunity to speak with you. I yield the rest of my time and thank you very much.
All right. Jamaro Tilson, please.
Yes, sir.
Jamaro Tilson from District Nine. I'm speaking on the behalf of Downtown Alliance of Chattanooga. I was just speaking on a great opportunity for me to return, I'm a returned citizen also. And I was appointed to the Downtown Alliance through a great mentor, Trent Rogers, who introduced me to Steve, the director. And it is a great opportunity for me because for social development and outreach skills and helping people. And I was always being, I have always been big on helping people and helping up the community. So it's a great look for me and the, the, the path that I'm, the way, where I came from and where I'm trying to grow and go and grow in life now. So I would had a goal to be a motivational speaker and help people and help the community and make a change in our community. And I'd had so many opportunities to the point in life where they don't help me grow for machine operation, teaching me and helping me grow and learning new things in life for helping the homeless, trying to give back. And I feel like it's a great opportunity for I see it to grow within downtown or even to expand further out to other districts. So that's why I'm speaking on the behalf of Downtown Alliance.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Vice Chair, could you confirm Luke Varnell, please?
I do not see Mr. Varnell's name, sir, no.
Okay, Mr. Varnell, I'm sorry. It does not appear that you have registered to speak. Is there anyone else that has registered to speak this afternoon that would like to do so at this time? Would you please raise your hand? Okay, what about?
Yes.
Noel? She has, okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lydia, would you bring in Noel, please?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Council.
Hello.
Thank you for the time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to talk a little bit about.
I need you to give us, I need us to give you your name and district number, please.
Of course, Noel Whitebrooke, District Seven. I spoke to you back in July during the budgeting process. At the time, there was hundreds calling in with calls to divest from the police budget and invest in alternatives to the police that, that help black and brown communities. At the time, the council's stated position was that that was impossible. It was too late in the budgeting process. It turns out that wasn't correct. The budget is an ongoing item. The council is free to amend it as desired anytime. You're considering amendments now. We've all learned from that, I hope. Another thing that I've done since July is listen to interviews with our own Deputy Chief of Police and faith leaders in Chattanooga. One of the, one of the questions I found really fascinating was whether the police want to keep going on mental health crisis calls. They don't. They don't. That's what the Deputy Chief of Police said. She would love to have that changed. Uh, she doesn't, they don't have adequate training. They don't have adequate funding. They would not, they would, they would prefer to not do that if they could. The fact that the council hasn't seen that as an opportunity shows a complete lack of imagination. The budget isn't just about, uh, numbers. It's about priorities and it's about a better Chattanooga. I'd like you guys to consider that and listen to the concrete ideas that others are putting forwards to divest from the police and invest in other opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think you told me that Mr. Varnell is not registered, correct, sir?
That is correct.
All right. Anyone else that is registered that would like to speak this afternoon, would you please raise your hand? All right. Could you confirm Donald O'Connor? And now I see. Stevens? Nope. Uh, Ms. Lydia, would you bring in Donald O'Connor, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, am I on?
Yes, you are. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, asking to speak because I am a board member.
Could, could you give us your name and, uh, district number, please?
Yes, Donald O'Connor. I live in the downtown district.
Okay.
And I am the board member of the Chattanooga Downtown Alliance. Uh, the rules require that the, the board of the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance include, uh, um, people who live, a certain number of people who live downtown, including one has to live, at least one has to live north of Fourth Street. And so I am that board member. And I want you to know, I'm very proud to be a member of the, of the board. I'm, I'm very pleased, uh, with the earlier presentation of our, uh, dynamic duo, Steve and Steve. Uh, they did a great job. They're continuing to do a great job. Uh, the main reason I signed up to talk was, uh, in case there was anybody from the general public who had raised any issues, and I haven't heard any, so I don't really have to, uh, address any issues. Um, I also, I should mention, I'm on the Finance Committee, which includes and under words, we've already approved the budget that is before the city council. And I was also a member of the Vendor Selection Committee, which basically, uh, hires in trains and manages all of the people who you see out on the street in the orange shirts. Uh, the only other thing I can add to that is I know several people have talked today about the police department. And I'd like you to know that I've lived downtown since two thousand and seven. And I've been very, very pleased with everything that the police department does, including the way that they refer people to, uh, the mental health, uh, facilities around town. Whenever that is, uh, uh, something that would be important. And I know that, uh, Steve Brooks can tell you that, uh, he has formed a, a very good, uh, cooperative, uh, relationship with the police department. And they've been just real helpful to the, uh, Downtown Business Alliance. And I'd be glad to answer any questions otherwise. Otherwise, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else, uh, that would like to speak that did register before our six o'clock meeting began? Would you please raise your hand at this time? Okay, council, I'm seeing no other hands that have registered before our meeting began. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next week, council.
Have a good one. Yeah.